Then I didn't realize how like I look like a drowned rat. So the guy next to me, he goes, "I think you're sweating profusely." I'm like, "No, I was in the rain." I was like, "Well, thanks for telling me."
All right.
And now that's on tape.
I'd like to call the meeting to an end, please. And before we do the pledge, I'd like us all to stand in a moment of silence. It is September 11th, and a long while back, we got a catastrophe in this country. So a moment of silence, please, and then we'll follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some adjustments to the next agenda, and they're mostly deletions. I entertain a motion to delete number five, which is the presentation of the 2017 audit. We're going to do the auditor thing in February.
No, we're avoiding February.
We're avoiding February. Sorry, thank you.
What we're going to do is, instead of the presentation of the '27 audit tonight, we're going to do the 2017 audit tonight and the preliminary report on the 2018 audit in a couple of months, probably in October.
We'd like the auditors to go, so we're not going to have a presentation tonight.
Not tonight, but in 20 -- we're going to do the 2017 audit presentation with a 2018 preliminary audit presentation.
Together.
In November.
In November, okay. So in any event, number five is off the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, and number six is off the agenda as well.
And rescheduled for the next meeting.
Yeah, the gentleman from First Advisors was unable to make the meeting, okay. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Citizen comments? No? Okay, good. Not good, I'm not sure. Select board comments? Makes it faster. Select board comments, any?
Well, last week, I talked a little about -- oh, that goes with that. One of our high school students who had received a scholarship and wrote a thank-you note, and those are always delightful to be able to read to the public when our students, who first of all, have done something well, received a gift as a result of it, and appreciate that gift. And this week, we had an anonymous donor who -- it felt the same. Someone who many years ago, in the '50s at some point, received one of the scholarships that this town gives to its students. And as a result of that scholarship, he was a person who, you know, had some hardships in his life, lost his father in high school, got here, there, and everywhere, and ended up going to school, getting a bachelor's degree, and was very successful in his life. And so, he gave back to the community, and he gave back to that Gemptner scholarship 10 times what they gave him. And, you know, how nice it is to give back to your community, you know? And that's how it keeps going, by people getting it and giving it back. So I thought that was a really nice thing for our town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
So I have some sad, not sad, but disappointing news. We will not be paving in Dutch and Grossneck this year. The ditching and the drainage work is taking much longer than anticipated, so we're going to have to put that off until the spring. Pine Street Landing is essentially completed. We're going to have the final inspection next Friday. I know that everybody has seen today, "The tide is high." Okay, never mind. That was a great song from the '80s.
"Wicked High."
"Wicked High."
Yeah.
Is that appropriate terminology? So the tide, we are watching that because we know it is close. We're going to continue to watch that, but I think there was a foot and a half today play in it.
It was an 11.8 tide, minus 1.3, so.
They'll get bigger.
Down to like a minus two, right?
It's in the springtime. That's when you'll see the real results.
That's the lowest tide, right? Minus two.
That's when you'll see the results.
So.
A fact, I should say.
We have that issue. The RFP LED streetlights are -- is still out. We also have just a little chat about taxes. There's been a lot of chatter on Facebook, Hans Waldeboro, about the tax increase, and I just wanted to put it into perspective. We went up, the town of Waldeboro went up $60,223. What hit this year was the VOTEC school that the towns voted for. And just to give you some perspective, a house assessed $150,000. Just the portion for that school coming online for the debt service accounts for $190.35 in an increase in taxes. So I read a lot of comments on Facebook. I did try to answer them all with that answer because I think that unfairly, the town is getting blamed for that huge increase. That is something that was voted on by the voters. So the best advice that I can give is it feels good to go into a voting booth and vote for something that sounds good, but you have to understand the financial impact of that. And that's a significant financial impact. So I think people forgot that when they voted for that, and then it hit this year in debt service, that's a big increase. That's a big increase of -- and what is driving that cost? It's not your local taxes, it's your school taxes. So I just was trying to make that point on Facebook, but I thought we better share that with everybody.
How long is that debt service?
That I do not know, but I -- that's --
I'm just curious.
It's here.
I didn't know if it would draw up our taxes after three, four, five months.
No.
I think it's more like 20 years.
No.
Is it that long?
Yeah, I don't know how much the school was to begin with, but I will find out, and I will email you tomorrow with that information. But I just, I did want you to know that. We also did receive good news. Our reimbursement for our declaration for the one snowstorm is a total of $48,497.33 that'll go back into our coffers. I need to remind all of you that September 20th, you need to be at the Lincoln County Budget -- County Budget Advisory Committee meeting. Our electric building on Winslow Mills Road is being reevaluated as they came in, paid the taxes, and are supposedly making improvements to the property.
Nice.
Stan is going to go out and see how serious these improvements are. So that is something that's exciting, and I have to look -- I am not checking my text messages, I am looking at my managers' report because I forgot to print one out. Chief of Police, we are still accepting applications for the Chief of Police. We have received several applications, so that's kind of an exciting thing. The Shoreland Use Ordinance, the Select Board was updated by the chairman on the question of manure and the closeness to the river. And I think the only other thing we have to talk about is the broadband. The CTC Committee met yesterday. We were chatting about spectrum and getting connection to getting the people on Chapel Road connected. So we did receive information today that they're going to send their engineers back out to Chapel Road. They agree that it's service. I explained, they actually sent an email this morning, so it's almost like they are listening. But I did receive an email this morning from one of the managers there, and they are going to send out an engineer. I think that we need to assist the residents in signing up for that service if we can. So we're keeping the lines of communication open. So I think we're making a little, very little bit of progress, but I was shocked to see that email this morning, so I was very pleased with that. And that is about all I have.
Excuse me, can you just say something about the ladder truck?
Oh, the ladder truck.
Much discussion.
There is a lot of discussion about the ladder truck.
The stuff that's done.
And I would prefer to have Paul here to discuss the ladder truck, but we will be revisiting that with another public meeting. Everybody seems to think that the ladder truck is the reason that, unfortunately, the timing of the discussion for the ladder truck coincided with the tax bill. So everybody thinks, "Oh, we already bought this ladder truck." We have not bought a ladder truck. It is something that we are considering. I think Paul is, all the questions that we are getting, I am forwarding to the chief for him to address those questions. And some of them are great questions, and I think are worthy of discussion, which was the whole point of bringing it up, was to have discussion. In October, the Select Board will be meeting with the Budget Committee and discussing financing, not just the fire truck, but all the projects that are needed in town, to have an actual 10-year capital plan. I think that's something that's really exciting, and that will be part of that discussion. But no decision has been made, and yes, a couple, just a couple of questions, they did consider used, and I don't think used is off the table. New is on the table, used is on the table. I know I've heard a lot of discussions, do you, what do you really need? What should the fire department look like? All valid questions that I'm sure that the chief, at the proper time, will come back and have that discussion, but this was not the meeting to have that. It will probably be the second meeting in October when we will have them come back, or even the first meeting in November. So that's where we're at for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Consent calendar. A move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent calendar? All in favor? Okay. All business. The intersection of Jefferson and Main Street, this is one of the things we had on the last meeting's agenda that we didn't have time to get to. And I'm going to ask Clint to start off the discussion on this.
There was this lady, Penny something, I told you her name, but anyway, at the intersection, when you're coming into town, you look up the hill, you can't see, and I know we have it designated as passenger cars, but the vehicles like I have and April have, you know, if they're at the corner of them passenger cars, I guess they're not.
SUVs.
And you really can't say you have to go out into the intersection. So it's sort of, you know, what do you do about it? I brought it up to Bob and Julie, and that's sort of where we're at with it.
So where we're at is the first, if you were heading towards Friendship, the parking space on the left.
There's two spaces in front of the law.
There's two, right.
Yep.
The one can be removed, you've already done that, but when they repaved last year, they put it back in, so that can be removed. Yep. That's about all we can do at this moment.
We can't remove both of them?
You cannot remove both of them.
And is that the state that's telling us that?
That's a state issue. And we can't remove the one that I personally think should be removed, which is the one when you turn onto Jefferson, and that Black Raptor thing is there, that Ford, which, you know. That one, that one, I have difficulty at times when I'm going towards Friendship. People come around that corner quite fast, and they see that truck, and they sort of come at you. So I now kind of move over just on my own because it's a little, I mean, I know it's there, but a lot of people making that turn don't know it's there. I personally think that should be moved forward. Now, on Jefferson Street, John said we could potentially move that forward just to give us a couple more feet, which I think would be handy, you know? But I definitely see your issue with that one space, so we can do that. The other issue is, though, an enforcement issue. When we do see SUVs and pickup trucks, our police department has to start ticketing those people, and that sounds harsh, but that's the only way for people to learn, you know, give them warnings at first. But, you know, that second spot is for compact cars only, it's not for SUVs. But a lot of times, people don't think of SUVs now, the Equinoxes, the Equinoxes and the Ford. I don't, I don't know Ford's names for those SUV things, but you can't see, and I think people think of them like cars, but they're really SUVs, so.
No, oh, I think John has.
John?
The other question I have is, where does it say for small vehicles only?
It's written right on the pavement.
It says passenger cars.
Passenger cars.
It's not very noticeable.
What I'm saying is.
Should say compact.
Especially for older people, they're trying to look ahead and to the side because they're not looking down as much. And I think that's one of the things, they're more concentrated on their driving, and I think there has to be something done so they can see it quicker, because a lot of these old people got these big SUVs, big trucks, and it's convenient for them to stop. So I think something needs to be done, you know?
They're pretty large signs on the road. They're printed on the road.
What I'm saying is.
Well, you've got to look at the lines when you park.
They may not see.
I don't know, I'm not old enough yet to.
You take a big pickup truck, take a big pickup truck, look over the hood and tell me where you see the road.
I don't know, I just, I just look at the parking space.
Okay, just go down here and get in a truck, see how far ahead of that hood you see.
I have a girl truck, I see fine.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
No, I don't, what do you think, what do you think would work?
I don't know, I'm just trying to say what the problem is, that you have people that can't see that. And it's never been publicized on the website or anything that we've changed parking down the street. Did anything put out?
We've increased it. It was increased. There had been one parking space there, and after the town, or the state, state was it?
The state repaved.
They put, one that we had removed, they put it back, so now there are two.
Last year, when we had the curbs done, they added that space back.
But can that space be taken out?
That space is going to be taken out.
Do we need a, you need direction?
No, because you already did it once.
Yeah. Do we know how he's going to do it? Because I think last time, he just let it.
He's going to do something different.
Let it die out, but it's freshly painted, so.
Yes. Johnny will take care of it. The John Dagle will take care of it.
It is, it is. It's really hard for short people in shorter cars to look up that street too, to see. I can't see through those cars, and if there are two trucks there, it's really.
It's really hard.
It's dangerous.
I still think that other turn is weird too, so we're going to adjust that.
I do too. I don't like that, going down Jefferson Street.
Even crossing Main Street from Jefferson to Friendship is, I think, tough.
So on the other side of it?
People come up real fast up that hill, there's that curve there.
Well, I do think we, in general, have a speeding issue.
Yes.
I actually have to, now that I walk the streets of Waldeboro every morning, that doesn't sound good, let me refreeze that. Now that I am walking every morning in Waldeboro.
For exercise.
For exercise, thank you. Yeah, that did not sound good. I have noticed that it is much quicker than one thinks.
They have people.
People are fast, and I have seen now, at that intersection, people not even stop and just blow through, and I am amazed, and I'm standing there yelling at them, and one gentleman decided that he would stop and yell back at me, which was lots of fun. I will say that he learned some New Jersey expressions very quickly.
Solar lights around all the stop signs, solar lights.
I do think that would be an excellent, well, unfortunately, that's a lot of money, but I do think that that particular intersection could benefit from that.
Well, and also, people going uphill tend instinctively to put the foot on the gas. They're going uphill, they've got to keep up their speed.
But it is, I have to say that it is very noticeable to me now.
All right.
So it's a good thing.
That's good news. That's good news.
Are we done with this one?
Yes.
Any comments from the, no? Okay, we'll move on. Fireworks ordinance.
Fireworks.
This is Ray Perkins, and Ray's going to circulate a petition, and I guess we're going to try to get it on the June ballot to, if you get the signatures on the petition, we can.
For this next year.
Yep, yep.
And how many signatures does he need?
I think about 220.
222.
Two?
Yep.
Okay, but what I'd like to talk about tonight is what are people's reactions to limiting fireworks to 4th of July, Memorial Day, and New Year's Eve?
Do you want to know what the public's reaction has been?
No, sort of what the board's reaction, because I hear, I hear things from everybody on this. Everybody has an opinion on it, and there doesn't seem to be any majority. The current ordinance passed by about 128 votes back in 2012. 128 more people were in favor of that ordinance than are today, but we've had five, six, seven, eight years of experience with it now. Maybe people feel differently.
But why does the Select Board have to give an opinion when if the petition comes in, you have to put it on the ballot?
If the petition comes in, we have to put it on the ballot.
So I don't think it's really a discussion for Select Board. I think it's more of, I mean, in my opinion, if the gentleman wants to do a petition, that's his right.
Right.
And you don't really have a choice for putting it on.
At that point, we do not.
But I will tell you this, this has been probably the most, next to the ladder truck, actually, it's probably more, I have gotten more comments about this than the ladder truck, and people are very content with the ordinance as it exists. Their belief is that it's an enforcement issue, not a fireworks issue.
Pardon me?
I said, by and large, the number of comments I have gotten is that it's not a fireworks issue. People are happy with the ordinance as it is, they believe it's an enforcement issue.
I don't understand that.
So.
I don't get that thinking at all.
Understand, because you're not, you don't like the fireworks ordinance, and I understand that. Many people enjoy setting off fireworks and enjoying that aspect of it. Where they're running into issues is people think the ordinance is fine the way it is, but that our police department has to do a better job of enforcing it when there's complaints.
Well, the way it's written, the police enforce a person's right to use the fireworks. That's what enforcement means. You can't stop them from using the fireworks, no matter how much they're being, someone's being abused by that happening.
The timing.
I understand that, I'm just saying that that's the feedback I've gotten.
Yeah, well, while I was circulating my petition for two days, a couple hours each day, about half of the people I talked to were eager to sign the petition to ban fireworks. That's the response I got.
That's good, and.
And at one time, I had three people standing in line to sign it, and then it's been called for a halt because Mr. Butler wants to check the wording of the petition as I drew it up. But I don't think people have a real understanding of what these fireworks are. There's nothing like the fireworks I had when I was a kid. They're not little children setting off firecrackers, these are what I call bombs, and I don't think people understand that the strength has been increased, and I can't tell you how much, I don't understand that, the logistics of manufacturing fireworks, but I do know there's some awful explosions going off. Lots of times, it's in the dark of night, there's no people, I don't know of any people being in one area where they're setting them off. You can't see flashes sometimes. But let me explain one thing that happened to me about three months ago, will give you an idea of what I'm up against up in my area. Now, this is a part of a letter I wrote to Attorney General Mills to try to get her involved in this stuff. Several months ago, I drove home after dark around 8:15 PM. As I was about to turn into my driveway, my headlights picked up nothing in the road or on either side. I didn't see a thing, out of order. My car was just leaving the pavement when I was ambushed with a series of loud reports resembling about 25 or 30 pistol shots. I was in sheer terror, and I mean terror, because I was sure I was being shot at. I continued toward my house, hoping I could get there alive. When I got to the door of my house, the reports had stopped, so I stood there for a while, listening for talking and footsteps. There were none. For sinister purposes by a person unknown to me, I -- oh, this all was clearly an ambush for sinister purposes by a person unknown to me. I examined my car in the morning for bullet holes, and there weren't any. I have no idea what kind of guns or pyrotechnics might have been employed in this ambush.
And. Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Did you call the police?
Not that time. I'm tired of calling them, because every time I call, they say, "Oh, it's just fireworks, don't bother us."
That they've said not to bother you?
No, we didn't say that.
Okay.
That's what I bothered them. That's what I bothered them. They don't want to talk about it.
Yes, sir.
I'm not really familiar with the ordinance. Is there any time limit? What, when they may no longer set them off in the evening or whatever?
Yeah, 12:30 in the morning the next day.
No, 10 o'clock, 10, 5 to 10.
12:30.
But one certain day, that's allowed up to 12.
12:30 a.m.
Yeah, but not every day.
Not every day.
No, no, just certain, certain days.
Certain days.
Why should anybody set off these bombs at that hour of the night? Why should anybody have to put up with that?
No, but I, I do think that we have to have a conversation with the police department about that. If something like that happens, and it's happened obviously several times to you, that's a conversation we have to have with the police department. That's truly a police department matter. And I think that's worth the conversation. I mean, aside from the whole ordinance thing, put the ordinance thing aside, that's a police matter right there. I mean, that's, that truly is a police matter.
Well.
No one should be that afraid, and that should not happen repeatedly. And if my police depart, our police department, isn't addressing that, then that's something I have to handle, which will be addressed tomorrow.
When a lot of these explosions were going off in my area, when there was a lull between the explosions, I heard all these dogs going, "Ooh, ooh," all around the area. So it was disturbing the animals too.
I would also like to add to that too, the complaint. I'm getting complaints too. People with PTSD, for instance, if they're going off all the time when they're not supposed to be, that can be an issue. It also can be an issue with people with horses. Horses are very afraid of noise, and they are complaining as well.
But just so you're aware, they need to complain, and this is, you need to call the police. This is one of those things where you need to call the police, you need to call the town office. I appreciate that they're telling a Select Board member, I appreciate that they put it on Facebook, but none of that's official. You need to call the police department, you need to call the town office, you need to call the, you know, there's ways to do this. They need, there's certain things they need to do to be able to do this legally, and there's no way for us to enforce it if we don't know, so.
And I agree with that.
That has to be done.
Well, about three years ago, these fireworks were going off once or twice a week, and quite often for almost a year. And I called the police about five times during that period, and they just kept telling me that they're setting off fireworks and we can't do a thing about it.
Well, I will have a conversation again with them tomorrow about this. So how recently, when was the last time this happened?
In this incident, I just wrote about, it was about three months ago.
Okay.
Well, just for the record, the present ordinance allows you to let off these things on Memorial Day, the 4th of July, New Year's Eve, until 12:30 in the morning.
Right.
And one of the things I'm going to suggest that Ray put in his petition is to limit that time until 10 o'clock at night, so it's 10 o'clock at night across the board.
Well, I want that changed to 9:30, but I don't know, I can get away with it.
But, but you have to realize that, like on Waldeboro Day, the fireworks didn't start until 9:15. So you might want to.
Give them 45 minutes.
Fourth of July?
Yeah.
You might want to, I'm just saying that there's, I don't want anybody here to get the, to get the idea that this is going to be easy.
It's not.
People like their fireworks. And I think instances like this are rare, and that's an enforcement issue. I mean, something that, what you're describing sound like, more like ordinance than fireworks. And what are those? I know up in your area, there was an issue with somebody doing target practice. What are they called?
It's a special bomb.
Oh, the...
You know what I mean? I, I, help me. They're like a...
M80?
Tannerite.
Tannerite. Um, so I think that that, that's something that we need to actually talk to the police about. Because we could be taught, having two totally different discussions. That might not be fireworks at all. I mean, does that sound possible?
If it's nighttime, they're not out to shoot at nighttime. Not at targets.
I, I, I'm not sure. Because we had that issue at night, in town, believe it or not.
Let John here say something.
Yes, uh, hi. I, I, as you all know, I have a horse farm, and we raise horses, from the time they're born, right on through, and train them. And, um, one of the things that I can tell you is I want my horses to be desensitized to daytime noise so that they are better citizens for, uh, when they grow up. And there is people in this room that know that I have no problem with the loudest noises that weapons can fire fairly near me, because that serves that purpose very well. However, at after dark, at 9 o'clock at night, my question for the town is, how big are the ordinances allowed to be that are called fireworks?
Just state law. I think it's 400 grams or something like that.
Because I, I, we've had, in my neighborhood, in the last year, an escalation, not, not this, just this year, last two, three years, an escalation in the amount of loudness and the length of all of this at 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, that it sounds like I'm down at the Camden on the Green. And, and it's coming from less than, uh, 600 feet away, up the road from me. And it goes on and on, and there's been no neighborly warning. And we put the horses in, but they circle like this, or if you tie them up, and they're all sweated out completely when they're, when this goes on at night.
You should be calling about that, then.
What, I should be?
You should be, if it's, yes. You should call the PD.
When you call the, at 10 o'clock at night, over to our dispatch, they don't know what our ordinances are.
Well, it doesn't matter. That they, what you tell them is this.
But then we need more detail, I guess the...
No, no, no. What you do, when you call, you say, "I need an officer at my house to respond to a firework complaint." They're going to come. It's not dispatch's job to know the ordinance. It's our police officer's job to know the ordinance. That's what has to be done.
I, I certainly encourage...
And get tough. And if the dispatcher is telling you that they can't send somebody out, you call me the next day, get the dispatcher's name, because I want to know that.
Right. Well, this happens not only on these holidays that you've been mentioning, but also on graduation dates or birthdays.
Right.
And it's been really loud in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's legal. The thing is, it's legal until 10, and our, our, our sound noise ordinance is 10 o'clock.
Right.
Except for music in town. And then it's 9 o'clock.
Some of it's music, whatever.
People driving down the road.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, what I, just so you know, what I'm suggesting that Ray circulate as part of his petition is to limit fireworks to those three holidays. No more. And...
Like no Waldeboro Day?
If people agree, they're not going to sign the petitions. People...
You're not going to do it.
I'm sorry.
I think you're setting it up for failure.
Well, I, I don't know. I have, we'll talk about it. But this is Ray's petition. It's not, it's not ours.
Well, if it's...
But I was interested in getting feedback from people.
I'm just, I'm just telling you that this is a hot button, that, I just wanted you to be aware of all the things that we've heard, and I've, I hear a lot. That's, but I think that if, there is very limited chance of that passing with just those holidays. You might want to try to get something that's more reasonable, that has a chance of passing. For what it's worth, that's my opinion. But I, I think select boards should not have an opinion at this point in time.
Right. No, it's a discussion.
That's my advice.
Yeah, that's a discussion.
I've had a lot of sickness down through the years. It's called, uh... I can't think of them. But anyway, it's, it's due to lung problems. And I've lost a lot of sleep. And, uh... One night, these fireworks went off, and they stopped at 9 o'clock, and they started at 10. They stopped, they started at 11. They stopped, and they started at 12. And, uh, this kid up here on my street, he's, he doesn't care who, who he's disturbing. What are, what are we going to do about people who are sick and can't get sleep? One time, I, they woke me up, and I couldn't get to sleep the rest of the night. Because I was being treated for lung disease.
Again, I think when that happens, the police have to be called. That's the only way. And if you know who's doing it, then that gives us even more of an ability to have a conversation with them.
Well, I know who's doing it all right.
After 10 is against our ordinance. So that would be an easy...
And if they're repeatedly doing it, that, that, that's where the police need to get involved. And, and we will definitely have that discussion tomorrow with the police department.
Okay.
Well, about this petition now, uh, how should I rewrite that?
We'll talk about writing it up the way you want it to be. We'll, you can try to get people to sign up for it. And if we get the signatures, it'll go on the ballot.
But you think fireworks should be allowed for, on three specific holidays?
That's my personal opinion. Yeah. If you want to write up a ban, no fireworks in Waldeboro, period, that's your right to do that and do the, and circulate that petition.
Well, that's the way it's weathered. I may continue to do that. But people were, the people who signed my petitions were anxious to do that.
You've had people sign it already?
Yes, I got around 25, 27 signatures.
I don't think you should get any more until you, until you go...
Well, well, I think, first of all, I think, I think that select boards shouldn't be involved in crafting any type of petitions, because you vote on it technically.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is, he's already petitioning this with already words on the petition. I'm saying, stop petitioning until you get the right words.
But I think he wants, I think he already knows what he wants.
He wants what he wants.
I think Bob, I think, I think he knows what he wants. I think we should let him do what he wants. And the wording should be his wording. It's his petition.
Right. Otherwise, those signatures aren't valid.
Right.
If there's any change.
They can't change it. Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was just...
Yeah. Right. Right, because you're, you're going to vote on it.
I know.
I mean, we, I don't think you would vote to not have a petition that's presented. But you're going to have to vote, and you want to have...
I don't think we should be involved in any of the wording on petitions that come before us.
I didn't say that.
Yeah. No, I, we know, I know that you didn't. But I, I think if that's what you want, a total ban, then that's what you should have on your petition.
Some towns have done that, and, uh, there's another town, Ullboro, I think, that type of ban is in progress.
I, I just, I think that's going to be a hard, hard thing in this town. But that's just my, like I said, that's just my opinion. I just wanted to be honest about...
You can leave it to the voters.
Leave it to the voters, exactly.
Yep. Shall we move on?
Yep.
You okay, Ray?
Yeah, can I be excused?
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And we have the CTC update, but...
I kind of did that.
John, did you want to say something?
John, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm really excited to hear that you've had contact today, which sort of changes the tone of what's going on. Thank you.
I try, John.
And I never doubted that.
I try.
And after all this time of two years of trying to get Spectrum to respond, that's a major step. And I hope we can carry it forward to finish the town, which will be to cover other areas that are not covered by the existing franchise agreement, where there are small pockets in two or three places, uh, that, where the people do not have service, but they are right next to the cable on an adjacent road, to make it very simple for us to be able to get together with this provider to finish up the job in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sometimes you get more, uh, good, we play good cop, bad cop. It works.
Definitely.
I just don't want to be the bad cop all the time.
You'd sing your way out of it.
I could.
Okay, let's move on.
Don't encourage her. Don't encourage her, please.
Uh, 12-1, liquor license, one-time catering event, Harvest Moon.
I have a question about the form they filled out. They don't have the right town name. No, Waldo.
Where are we looking?
I'm seeing Waldo everywhere.
This is Waldeboro?
Waldeboro.
The location is...
Down the line, says Waldo.
The location is in Waldeboro.
The location's in Waldeboro.
It says the town or city. It says Waldo on it.
Where?
Well, that was on the website.
It might have gotten cut off, maybe? This all says Waldeboro.
It's in the second page.
Says Waldeboro. Waldeboro.
Oh, that's the back page here.
That's your back page, second page. It looks okay.
Shall we move on? Is there, is there a motion on this?
I move second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, done. 12-2, paving at Pine Street Landing, parking area.
Okay, so... It would appear that the grant covered paving a portion of the pay, of the parking lot at Pine Street Landing that was disturbed, but not the entire parking lot. In order to complete that project totally, and, and part of that was... When we had the other grant that we had received, we were going to do the entire parking lot, because we were going to use that grant that we got from the property next door. That was going to be our amazing clamming center and museum and all those fun things. So that's where the idea that we had enough money to do the whole parking lot came from. What John would like to do is take the money that we appropriated for Dutchneck and move it, it's a portion of the money, down to Pine Street Landing so that we can pave Pine Street Landing this year, and then just put the money we would have put in to pave Pine Street Landing back into Dutchneck the following year. I mean, it makes sense. It's coming out of his paving budget. We know that we're going to do it. We can't pave Dutchneck this year, this fall, because of Dutchneck and Grossneck not being done with the ditching and the drainage. So that way, that project's totally done. We don't have to revisit it. And then Dutchneck, Dutchneck Road and Grossneck Road can be done next year. I mean, it does make sense. It's a good plan. Marine Park, yes. Marine Park. Does that make sense to you? And that way, Pine Street is totally done.
Do we have any numbers to look at?
Yes, we have. $31,200. That was the low bid.
What would we, how much of, how does that affect Dutchneck?
$31,200. That's about, was it $72,000 to do Dutchneck?
So roughly, roughly...
Half of it.
Half of it. And...
So you're going to have to come up with that, which you would have to come up with this anyway in next year's budget.
If we were to decide to pave it.
And it should be. I mean, that is our heaviest use, am I wrong commercially, our heaviest use landing.
So just, we're just reallocating money.
You're really real, but it needs your approval to do that. I mean, and that's John's recommendation. It would be my recommendation. And that way, that project is totally done.
Done.
Well, let's get a motion on the table in a second, and then talk about it. If there is a motion to...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now let's discuss it. Would he be able to finish up this up this fall?
Yes, this would be done this fall. You're not going to get Dutchneck done because you, you just can't. He doesn't have the time.
Preliminary stuff has to be done.
Other, other issues have to be done.
So we'd have the budget?
Thirty, another $31,000 next year.
And this is including Dutchneck Road and Marine Park?
Dutchneck Road, Marine Park, and Grossneck would then go next year. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. And this year, we...
And this year, you would do Pine Street Landing outright.
I think it makes sense, since we just worked on...
We did.
Pine Street Landing, to do the job and have it complete, and then they can, garden folks can get in and fix it up, have it complete.
And you also don't know what the land use committee is going to talk about with doing improvements to Dutchneck Park. Marine Park.
Marine Park.
You're not losing anything, because you weren't going to pave it this year.
So if we didn't do anything this year, we didn't pave anything, we'd have 70 grand sitting in a reserve account somewhere to pave in the spring.
Correct.
Correct? If we pave this fall, well, instead of having 70 grand in the bank in the reserve account, we'll have about 35 grand.
But you're going to also have money available in his paving account that you could also reimburse from...
Which he may not use all of it.
Correct.
Which we could...
Use then for all of Dutchneck, Grossneck, and Marine Park.
Do we know how much money that is at this point?
It's just the difference of the $31,000 that you'd be taking out of it. Right now, he has met much more, because he hasn't done any paving at all.
Oh, okay.
Worst-case scenario is you have to budget another $31,000. Best-case scenario is you're not going to have to budget anything. But I'd rather tell you the worst case, so that you can't come back to me and say... Because you will. You know, I don't like it when you yell at me. You, you do it in German, and I don't understand what you're saying. I'm totally joking with him right now, just so everybody knows.
She knows. She don't yell at her. Sorry.
It would be more than $31,000 next year, because the cost is going to go up.
And we don't, and I'm, it, it probably will. But the 31,2 is an estimate, and John's thinking it'll be even under that, because it'll, it'll depend how many loads they take of the actual asphalt. And the price of oil. And it might be cheaper next year, um, just because we might have bigger paving projects, because we could combine the fall and the spring. Bigger, the more you pave, the cheaper it is per ton.
It's not going to get cheaper by doing nothing.
Not really.
Will, will John finish up the, the work that has to be done on Dutchneck and Grossneck this fall?
Yes.
So that all of that stuff will be finished? Is he running over budget on that?
No, he's just running out of time, because there was a lot more to do. If you recall, we had this huge discussion last year about all these trees. And if you'll recall, nobody wanted to touch the trees. Then people started running into the trees, and then everybody wanted their trees down. So it's, this is, this is how life is. And so, you know, there's been a lot of trees and a lot of ditching to be done.
Okay. Craig, did you have something else?
My question is, have we hauled our winter sand yet?
No.
And we're running behind on...
Well, that's why we're going to, that's why we're going to not pave, because that gives them time to run their winter sand and do all of their other things.
I've always had the problem with hauling winter sand in the fall. August, July, when it's the driest, it's the best time for sand. This time of year is getting wet, damp. Takes more salt to keep it from freezing. So we're behind on hauling. It'll take them a month to haul sand.
I don't know, to be honest with you. I would love to answer that, but I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I want to say that sounds reasonable, but I think it was six weeks last year. But we were down a person last year, too. But I don't know if you've seen the amount of tree and brush that we've removed. I mean, they're hauling logs out of Dutchneck and Grossneck.
Has anybody been down to see Grossneck?
I have.
No, but I mean, on the...
I haven't, I haven't been down.
John has, has suggested we go down and take a look. He said he's very pleased with the work.
He is. I mean, it's, they're doing a beautiful job, but it's much more labor-intensive than, it's, it's not the easiest job down there.
Call for the vote?
Okay. Discussion's over. All in favor of the motion? Against? Abstaining? I abstain. I abstain. We need to go into executive session. Is there a motion, please?
Second.
Pursuant to...
Personnel matter one, MRS A4056A.
Six, yeah, sorry, 6A, thank you.
6A.
Yeah, you got it.
We don't have a...
We don't.
It's for the manager.
Hi, Ben.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Glad to be back.
Huh?
Glad to be back.
Oh, good.
That's what makes sure I have it right.
The motion was to go ahead and pave, do the pavings at Pine Street, and not to do the paving on Dutch Neck and Gross Neck.
So reallocating funds would be accurate?